This is the meeting of the Committee to Review Town Council Rules in the Town Code. Meeting of December sixteenth at four P M. By Zoom. This meeting is being recorded and will be rebroadcast on the Town of Barnstable's Government Access Channel. In accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty. The Chair must inquire whether anyone else is recording this meeting, and if so, to make, to please make their presence known. Not seeing any, this meeting will be replayed via Xfinity Channel eight or High Definition Channel ten seventy-two. It may also be accessed via the Government Access Channel Live Video On-Demand Archives on the Town of Barnstable's website. Thank you very much, and Cindy, would you please do the roll call?
Certainly, Councillors. Turkelson.
Here.
Verdic.
Present.
Vice President of the Town Council, Craig Tamish.
Present.
Vice President of the Town Council, Councillor Clark.
Here.
Councillor Betty Lotkey. You have quorum, and we're also joined by Attorney Nova and Assistant Town Attorney Alison Cogliano.
Thank you very much.
And I'm sorry, Councillor Clark, did you mention that everyone's participating remotely?
Nope, I did not. So thank you very much for making that clear. I did say that the meeting is on Zoom.
Okay, okay. Wanted to make sure that everyone knows we're all, that you all are remote.
Yes, and is there anyone from the public speaking today?
I don't have anybody at the present time.
For public comment. Thank you very much. Okay, so can we go through the the draft that Attorney Nova and Attorney Cogliano has sent over, please?
Vice President Clark, could I just ask a question of Attorney Nova first before we get into that? As a result of the election and under the current rules, I'm an ex officio member of the committee anyway. We have changed the rules to make it non-voting, but at this point, am I still a voting member of the committee in my present role? Or am I excess baggage at this point?
I think that's an excellent question. I think the answer is a little unclear. I would recommend that we actually address this in the rules. And I would recommend that if there is an ad hoc committee that's in progress, like this one is, and then there is an election, that 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 wouldn't affect the voting or the chairmanship or any of that for the completion of the committee work. I think it's a little weird to like suddenly change all the rules midstream. You know, because the appointments were made based on, you know, the way the council was constituted with the officers. So that would be my suggestion, and I can add something to the rules if that makes sense. To say, like, you can finish the work you're doing and remain voting, and Councillor Clark can remain Chair. But that anything new would be under the rules for that. Does that make sense, or?
It does. That's what I was curious about, because obviously, we don't want to change the whole committee in the middle of.
Yeah, I mean, that's just my take on it. The rules are silent on that. But I think that makes the most sense, because it would just be very disruptive, I think, to suddenly change. Counsel Letky, you just joined us. I don't know if if you heard that.
I'm sorry about that. I lost track of time. No, I did hear about the meeting disruptive. Chris and I actually chatted about this earlier today. So.
Attorney Nova suggesting that we maintain the committee structure the way it currently is, because it's midstream and wasn't that the election does change our status, but but we can address this in the rules now that we've have have the situation to present itself.
Yeah, no, I think that's wise, that you wouldn't want to change horses midstream, especially as we're nearing the end of one phase of our review. Yeah.
So maybe we stay, if everyone's in agreement, we stay the way we are as we proceed, and then we'll add something to the rules that specifically addresses this.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
Okay.
And I did inform, I'll have to leave for a five o'clock meeting. The CWMP meeting is at five o'clock.
Okay.
Thank you.
That works for me in terms of like departures.
Okay, well, there's a lot worked done here. Thank you.
Sure, if you'd like, I can go through it, and I was gonna say, Alison, I have a black and white copy, so I can sort of see what's highlighted. So if you think I'm missing something, please jump in and and nudge me or correct me. So what I can do is go through the rules, go through what's new and different. And then I sent you two separate documents. I took Section five and took a shot at reorganizing it to see if I thought it would just be easier to read in a separate document, because there's so much redlining at this point. I think the agreement I gave you, not the agreement, the rules that I gave you reflects those changes in it reflects the language changes, but the reorganization is in a separate document. So when we get to Section five, we can look at that. And then we did a draft, and Alison worked on this, we did a draft rule for sanctions for violating the rules, and we can talk about whether whether that's a good idea. You know, whether the language works, but whether it's a good idea to include in these revised rules at this time. If that makes sense. So Counsel Clark.
Yeah, please, please start. Thank you.
Okay, so page one, I think what is new is Section B, Use of Town Phones and Email. I think you all have it. I don't know if you need me to read it or not, but
No.
That's the new language, so if there's any discussion on that.
Nope, that's good to have that addressed. It shows how stale our current rules are.
The title of A is highlighted. I don't know if you had something to say about that, or you made changes, but I don't. I may have highlighted it because I divided it into an A and B. I don't think the B was there before. I'm just guessing. I'm trying to remember, because I did I did most of the updates the end of November, and I don't really remember. But I think that may be why I did that. But yeah, you're right, it is highlighted. I wonder if I I might have added the word councillor. I'm not sure if that was there before or not, to be honest. I think you may have added the word. Maybe that's what, maybe that's why I highlighted it.
Anybody have any issues with that?
No.
Okay, carry on.
Okay, so we're good with A, we're good with B?
Yes.
Okay. Then I think the next thing that I changed is Rule five A. If you go to, it's on page three of that draft. And it's the second paragraph. Added, "Any councillor who is leaving the meeting early shall announce their departure, and the council president shall note the councillor's departure for the record." So the council would say, "I'm leaving now, I'm gone," and then the president would say, "Madam Clerk, please note that councillor so-and-so has left the meeting."
Do you think instead of council president, you should say the presider or chair? Because we've had occasions where the council president is not the presider.
Yeah, I mean, I think I kind of use the terms president and presiding officer interchangeably here. I can certainly change that to the presiding officer, if you think that's, if you think that's clearer.
Well, the president refers to a particular person, and we have this chain, we've had councillor Starr and Turkelson run a meeting.
So, okay, then, okay, so I will change the last two sentences. "The presiding officer shall note the arrival," and any count in those two sentences, and I'll leave it the way it is in the beginning.
Okay.
Can I go back to number four for just a moment?
Yes, I just want to jot this down. Rule four.
Yeah, I just, I don't remember this ever being used. It just seems so precise. Shall the decision of the chair stand as the judgment of the council? I'm not exactly sure. Does everyone understand what this means?
What that means is, let's say there's a point of order, right? Two councillors are talking to each other, and it's not going well, and someone says, "Point of order." And then the council president or the presiding officer will make a ruling as to how whatever that point of order should be resolved. But that's how it proceeds, but the council can always overrule the chair by vote. So under normal circumstances, point of order, the presiding officer makes the decision on that point of order. But but the chair, the presiding officer, can be overruled by vote of the council. And so that's the mechanism for that. It's saying, "Shall that decision stand?" So if you're all unhappy with whatever decision the presiding officer just made, he or she can be overruled.
So that, okay, so I see. I didn't quite understand that, but it's if the quorum is being broken, basically, you're saying. And and the presiding officer would say something to that.
Yeah, I mean, like, if you're saying, you know, a councillor keeps speaking, and the and the and someone says, "Point of order," you know, "The chair didn't recognize you to speak," and the chair says, "Yes, you know, you can't speak until I recognize you," and then everyone thinks that's wrong, you could actually take a vote to overrule that. But under normal circumstances, when there is a point of order, the president, presiding officer, will make the determination on how to resolve that, whether it's two councillors arguing with each other, or whether it's some other, you know, some other issue.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. And then back to Rule five A. So I changed the last two sentences of the second paragraph. So it's the "presiding officer shall note the arrival of any councillor who joins the meeting late, and then presiding officer shall note the councillor's departure for the record." Then the last paragraph of that same rule, we just added the word reasonable in the middle there. So after waiting five minutes, the meeting shall continue even if the technical problems have not been resolved. But at the discretion of the presiding officer, the meeting may be delayed for an additional reasonable period to allow for a further attempt to try to resolve the problems, or the meeting may resume in the way it was written. So it just added the word reasonable and additional reasonable period.
That sentence actually strikes me as being pretty long. I don't know if you want to chop it into two.
Okay, after waiting five minutes, the meeting should continue. The meeting may be delayed for a further attempt to try to resolve the problems. Or the meeting may resume. Why don't we stop there?
There's two, yeah, there's two buts.
Yeah, why don't we say, "May let, the meeting may be delayed for an additional reasonable period to allow for a further attempt to try to resolve the problems, or the meeting may resume." And then we could say, "In such case, the presiding officer may choose to skip certain agenda items while an attempt is made to solve the problems." Is that better?
Yes, that that reads easier.
Okay, everybody good with that? All right, hearing, hearing, hearing nothing.
Yes, sorry.
Okay, I think the next change, because I try to go through this quickly right before the meeting started. Find my changes. I think the next change is Rule five C, top of page seven. So that is, "The Barnstable Town Council shall meet on two Thursdays each month, with every effort made to schedule those meetings on the first and third Thursdays, except in the months of July and August, when only one meeting will be held each month on the third Thursday."
Thank you, that's good.
I don't know if we need the words each month, but I guess when only one meeting will be held, as it says, "Except in the months of July and August." Going back to five A, you did add in, in paragraph four, reasonable period. Right, yeah, we just talked about that. You did? Yeah. Oh, was that what you were, oh, I thought we were still on.
That's when we chopped it into two sentences.
My apologies. No, that's okay. So yeah, I'm not sure if that each month is necessary, except
I don't think it is.
July and August, when only one meeting will be held on the third Thursday.
That's better.
Yeah, I think so. Okay, I'll get rid of that. That was the only change in that paragraph. Okay, then. I don't think any change until.
Karen, if we could, in five E, and I think there was one other spot. It talks about delivery of the agenda and documentation to the councillors, but it doesn't define how that should be done. Should we define it? Now, for example, I was thinking, should we say something? Maybe the fact the agenda and supporting documentation shall be sent to the town councillor's town email address, or, I mean, obviously, we're not going to mail it or drop it off at their house. So is it worth clarifying that?
So you're looking at the sentence, "The council agenda, including the town manager's communication, complete with documentation, shall be delivered to the town councillors."
Yeah, there was one other spot. It mentioned it too, I think, farther up, but yes, that's.
Yeah, I was looking for the other spot, because the, we crossed out a lot.
I think it's under special meetings. It also says almost the same verbiage.
Where is that? What page is that? Well, we can wait till we get there, I guess, because we're not there, or maybe we passed it, did we? No, it wouldn't be before regular meetings. All right, let's look at this. How do you all feel about that? Do you feel that further clarification?
Or just go with, stay with the status quo, where it's.
I thought we were kind of keeping it neutral. I thought we were keeping it neutral, because the whole concept of like printed versus email and it's, I thought we felt like we were a little outdated by saying it would be delivered to our house, but maybe we didn't need to be as specific as, you know.
We could say, "Shall be delivered by email to the town councillors."
We all have town email now, so I mean, that does, there is kind of an implication that that's where we should be communicating council business on, so.
That's a good point.
But I'm a little leery of saying to the town council, "Email," because that's very specific, and I could see if, for whatever reason, someone can't access it that day, but you still need to get it to the councillors, so.
That's true. Somebody's email could be down or broken, or.
Something happened. So I would, if you want to add more language, I would probably just say, "Shall be delivered by email," or shall, yeah, "Shall be delivered by email to the town councillors."
Maybe it's not necessary. Maybe it's just getting down into the weeds too much. I don't know.
I think it's okay to leave it.
I agree. I think you should leave it, because I think it was problematic before when you had to give it to people's houses.
Yes.
And.
Now you're not saying.
And you're also, that that sentence nicely covers that if somebody's email is down, it's posted, so they can go find it. I mean, you're doing two things. You're posting it and delivering it. So I like it. It, I think it's, it's good. It's a little bit.
I wouldn't use the posting as an alternative to the delivery. I think that we need to figure out how to get it to each one of you, and if someone's having an email problem, I think we would work with that. But I think it should be delivered to each of you and posted. But I think that's pretty much what it says, so I think. Okay.
Do you want to refer, Karen, to Rule five in the breakout that you have here?
Do you, let me just.
Is there any reason?
Changes. Yeah, we could do that now if you'd like, because I don't think there are any other changes in this section. So do you want to take a look at the reorganization? And I don't know where mine just went. Oh, there it is. And I'm happy to move things around again. This is, I think, what kind of made sense to me, but see what you all think. Sorry, that's not for you guys, snapping at my cat.
Does anybody have any ideas about this reorganization that's presented by Karen?
All right, which, which, which number are we on now?
Five.
This is the separate document that I sent that just reorganizes Rule five.
Oh, okay.
So don't worry about the language in terms of the changes, because it's the same changes we just went through. It's really just, does it make sense to reorganize it this way, or are more changes needed?
Any comments?
I think the reorganization looks good. I like that. I think it flows. It makes sense. Was the section that says introduction of current business or council business, I'm sorry, I'm like looking at all of you, let me go back. It says introduction of council business, and it talks about no measure, non, non-measure, and then defines them. I guess I'm not understanding what section, what introduction of council business means in relation to those three paragraphs.
Well, because it talks about, nothing can get on the agenda. That's the introduction, unless introduced by a member of the council, the town manager, or via petition as provided in the charter. And then it says, and then it's, it's either a measure or a non-measure. That's what the agenda items are. So then it explains, it can't be introduced unless it, the council or the manager basically sponsors it. And then it explains what a measure and a non-measure is, as set forth in the charter. And the fact that it needs to have supporting documentation, which is the rationale.
Kristen, do you think that it, that the title of Rule five D should be worded differently? Like agenda? How do I want to say, introducing agenda items?
Well, no, I guess I just, I wasn't getting the measure and non-measure portion of it, other than we're just defining what they are here. It's kind of like, they're like, could be indented, I guess, because it, you know, they're not, because they're bolded like Rule five E is.
I see.
You know, it kind of confused my brain, whereas really, you're just defining them, so.
Correct. If you, if you go up to the paragraph above, it says, "No measure and non-measure shall be received or acted upon unless introduced by a member of the council town manager by petition." And then it defines what the measure or non-measure are.
But to Kristen's point, I think I could un-bold them and indent them so that it doesn't look like it has the same import as the section heading.
Okay, okay, I see what you're saying.
Does that?
Good idea.
Yeah, I just didn't understand how, I mean, I knew that there were definitions. I just wasn't understanding how them being defined helped explain the introduction of council business.
And I think it's only because that introduction is saying, "No measure or non-measure shall be," and then it's saying, "And here's what we mean when we say that."
Yeah.
So I can, I can do that. I can indent both of those and un-bold, you know, what's being defined and see if and actually, non-measure should be uncapitalized there, so that's, I will fix that too. Okay, yeah, if that makes sense to everyone, I'll do that.
That does to me. Thank you. I think that'll read better. Thanks for the suggestion, Kristen. Any other comments on section or Rule five, broken out this way, and the organization of it?
No, I think it's good. One thing, it speaks to Gordon's question. Remember Gordon during our voting had a question that he didn't seem to be clear on how something gets on the agenda, and I think it's pretty clear here that every councillor has the right to bring anything forward for an agenda. So I think this is, it's well-written and it's clear.
I mean, I think there's a slight difference, though, in terms of, I think councillor Starr was talking about how does he work with leadership to get a particular item on the agenda? And this, I think, is saying something slightly different, which is that nothing gets on the agenda unless it's sponsored by a councillor or the town manager, or it's through a petition. So I think it's a little different from what Gordon was asking.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay, well, a little bit later has agenda setting on there, but gives a little more information.
About that paragraph, yeah, the council president, right, that's, that talks about actually getting it on the agenda.
Yeah, so they call, they follow nicely, I think, that one, and then the next one.
Okay, so is everyone good with this organization?
Looks good to me.
Okay, good.
Yep.
Then we can go back to the other document and see where we left off.
Five, on to six.
I'm sorry, Councillor Clark, to Vice President Clark, did you say we're going to six, because I had a question of five G?
Oh, I'm sorry, go right ahead with five.
Karen, one of the, the things that I would like to see is, is, and I don't know how we do this with the open meeting law, but is there a way to have a council open discussion if a councillor has a question or something? And we, right now, I think we try to do it at Communications for Elected Official Boards, Committees, Commission Staff Correspondence, and Announcements. And I think council is a little bit hazy on if they have a question or a comment or something where that should be made. And again, I know if it's, I mean, there's the, kind of the caveat that the agenda is there for things that are known to be discussed, but it also says, you know, other items may be brought up. So how, how would all that work if we put a section in there for council discussion or council comment or something like that, or put it at the end of the communications? I don't know. What do you think?
I'm actually uncomfortable with having a section that just says council discussion, because then no one has been given notice as to what you're going to be talking about. So I think if a councillor brought something up as a question, it could be, well, if we're going to have a discussion about that, we can put that on next, the next meeting's agenda. But I think, that's why I think it's limited to, there's public comment, and then it's your response to what people have said. But I don't think you can just have a free-ranging discussion about anything without noticing it on the agenda, or potentially having open meeting law issues. You know, you could discuss something if it wasn't reasonably anticipated, but I don't really like relying on that.
Okay, I mean, that was kind of my, my thought there. Because some of the councillors have mentioned, they don't, they're a little bit foggy on if they have a question or a comment, where to make it.
Yeah, I mean, it's hard to answer that without knowing what it is they want to talk about. But in general, when the councillors are discussing things, there's supposed to be things that have been listed on the agenda so people know if it's something they care about to watch.
Okay.
You know, it doesn't mean you can't say anything, but if it starts to get into a really substantive discussion, I would say that whoever's presiding should say, "Well, let's hold off and put this on the next meeting's agenda if we need to have a discussion about it."
So could we go to an agenda-setting meeting and say, "I'd like to have a discussion about topic A, B, C on the next town council meeting," and then it could be placed on the agenda and noticed as such? town council meeting, and then it could be placed on the agenda and noticed as such, and then open then at that next meeting, say, I'd like to have a discussion about A, B, C as posted on the agenda and then open the discussion from there?
Yeah, I think as long, if you're posting it on the agenda such that the public has a reasonable understanding of what's going to be discussed, then sure. That's the whole point is really to give notice. It's not to stop you all from talking to each other, but it's to say, if you're going to have a discussion about something, we ought to be telling the public in advance.
Okay.
But there doesn't have to be a vote associated with it. It could just be a discussion. Yeah, I mean, you know, we, we talk about workshop discussions where we bring things to the council. You know, to me, the word workshop, when I first heard it, I was like, what is that, you know? But it's really just a discussion and I think you can call it whatever you want to call it. But the, the real important thing is to make sure it's listed on the agenda if, if you're all going to engage and discuss something. But you don't have to take a vote. You can have a discussion.
Okay.
You know, and then if you thought it was something that would lead to a vote, you would put that on the next meeting, you know, on another meeting agenda as an actual vote. I mean, that's what I would advise.
All right, okay.
Okay. Are we done with rule five?
Any other questions? I think so.
Okay. So rule six is taking a quick look. Think, okay, so I think the changes we made start with rule six F. And I'm looking at six F and I know we added. Standing committee. Oh, I see, I see. Never mind. I just answered my own question. So. Okay, so we added standing committee to the first sentence because we're talking about ad hoc committees or standing committees of the council. And then the second sentence says, any matter may be referred to a standing committee commissioner board of the town with appropriate jurisdiction. So that's, that's what the two sentences are addressing. So see what you all think of that.
I'm comfortable with that. Any other input? Okay, go ahead and move on, Karen.
Okay. Rule six G is reconsideration. So that's where we said. It starts off with the same language at any meeting at which a vote has been taken. Any councillor who has voted with the prevailing side can move for immediate reconsideration or give notice that there'll be such a motion at the next meeting. And then the new language is, in addition, any councillor who has voted with the prevailing side can make a motion for reconsideration at the next regular meeting of the council following the vote. And if they know ahead of time and they, they talked to the president and vice president, we put that on the agenda, then you can do it at the next meeting. But if it's not actually noticed on the agenda, then at the next meeting, that councillor would give notice that a motion for reconsideration will be made at the following meeting so that we can give notice to the public. So that's what that section does.
Everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Okay.
Can I ask one question? I'm just, my brain is a little slow tonight. Under six F, we're saying that a matter before the council can be. Which may be properly examined and reported upon by an existing or new ad hoc. Blah, blah, blah. Any matter may be referred to a standing committee, commission or board of the council or of the town. Would we be able to have any matter to be referred to an ad hoc committee or just to a standing committee?
No, the first, the first sentence allows for the referral to an ad hoc committee or a standing committee of the council. So the first sentence allows for that, assuming it's properly within the jurisdiction of those committees. And then the second sentence talks about committees of the town.
Okay, sorry.
No, that's okay, because I actually looked at it just before this meeting and I was like, why did we say that? And then I realized.
That makes sense. Thank you. Slow on uptake.
Okay. Okay, so going back. I think the next change. Is. I think rule 11A, which talks about committees of the council. So I just added at, at the very end, all new standing committees, boards and commissions of the town council will be evaluated at the end of the first year to make it clear that is what we're talking about in that section. So if there are no questions about that. Excuse me. Then I think the only other change before we get to the, the sanctions discussion is and I made this change and I wanted to see what you all thought. We hadn't talked about it. It, the suspension of rules at the very end, rule 16. I felt like because we are updating and revising these rules that the council should follow them and that if you, you should always have the ability to suspend your rules. But I think you may want to have a higher quantum of vote to allow that so that the default really is that you follow them.
Yeah, I agree 100%. I, I. I verbalized it, you know, the rules are there and if we keep waving them every time something comes up, then why do we have it?
So I changed it to, instead of a majority of the councillors, I made it a vote of the, of two thirds, not of the full council, but of the councillor's president voting, because I think it only makes sense to be two thirds of whoever is actually there.
Well, the one caution I would have on that was the example of John Crowe with that executive session. And it was only because of a technicality that he couldn't do his reconsideration at the next meeting. So we had to suspend the rules. To do that. So it does. Through no fault of your own, perhaps puts you in a situation where you would have had a majority and now you've got to make two thirds.
Although honestly, I think the executive session is, is really an outlier. I think it's, that was, that whole thing was very unusual from, from my experience. And I think 99% of the time, when you're suspending rules, you're doing it in open session.
Are you okay with that, Betty?
Yeah, I guess. I mean, if I'm correct that that happened was because we weren't able to go into executive session because we had, didn't have a quorum. Was that correct? Is that why we had to suspend it the next time?
That's right.
No, you had to suspend it actually because he didn't give notice at the previous, at the meeting at which it was voted. Because under the existing rules, you have to give notice at the meeting at which it's voted and we're changing that. But we haven't changed the rules yet. So the rules as they currently read say, if, if you're on the prevailing side, you have to give notice at that meeting that you want to reconsider or that you, you make the motion for reconsideration or give notice that you will make it at the next meeting. That didn't happen and that had nothing to do with the quorum issue at the next meeting.
Okay, because he did do it at the next meeting, but you're saying the rules we're doing are new.
Right, we're, we're, we're changing that to make it a little more flexible, but that's not the current rule.
Yeah, as I say, I just don't want to lock ourselves into something with a technicality, so.
Yeah, and I understand that. I just think like, again, 99% of the time, it's going to be something in open session. I think that was, that whole thing was sort of highly unusual for an executive session. And I would, I would hate to not make a change for that one in a million example.
Okay.
That, that's just my thinking. But I definitely wanted to flag this because we didn't talk about this before.
Thank you. No, that's a good idea. And, and I do have a comment. I forgot about my notes here regarding public comment. And it's more about.
Are we leaving the two thirds? Are you, are you guys good with that?
I'm sorry. Yes, I'm okay with that. Is there any objection to the two thirds suggestion?
No.
Okay, okay.
Sorry, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm sorry to go back to rule five.
The famous rule five.
Yeah, the famous rule five. It's more about form and I didn't give enough thought to offer us a fix for this. But this is rule five H, public comment.
Yep.
And you talk about at each, it starts at each regular meeting and after that first paragraph, you write, I wish to remind everyone. And then you go into the first person. It's, it, it struck me as these are rules that if anyone, it's. Who is the I in this?
Well, if you look at the sentence before, it says, at the beginning of public comment, a statement shall be read by the public officer. And I guess that's a question whether you want to actually read the statement at every public comment, but that is what we had talked.
Yeah, yeah, okay, fine. And then I see how it's indented similarly to, yeah, I would, I picked up on that. So maybe put it in quotes or italics or something that this is a suggested. Like we read the, that it's going to be broadcast.
Yeah, I mean, and when you indent it completely, it's the same as being in quotes.
Okay.
So yeah, that's why it says, a statement shall be read substantially in the form set forth below. So I mean, if you change a few words, you know, it's fine. It's essential.
Okay, got it. I understand. I didn't read the, when I read it. And actually what I picked up on it is in, in my version. It started with the, the top of the page with you are free to express, express your thoughts. And I'm like, and that's how it struck me as a standalone comment.
Yeah, because it's actually one of you, you know, speaking.
Yes, I didn't, I didn't read the leading sentence before that.
Okay.
Okay, got it.
So I think we've kind of gone through the rules. We've gone through section five. And then the last thing that we had been asked to prepare was a potential rule regarding sanctions for violating the rules. And we provided that to you and I just wanted to mention that of the sample town council rules that I think councillor Turkelson provided, and I think there were 13 of them. Only Watertown has that rule, has a sanction. And, and I know Allison reached out to Watertown and they told her they've never used it. So with that as background, we did prepare this and I have a few thoughts, but I guess I'd like to hear what you all think.
I have a couple of thoughts on this one.
Thank you, Seth.
You all can hear me.
Yes.
I didn't read the exact language of the one. I've been traveling this weekend and I don't have my papers right in front of me. But I think generally, I think it's a bad idea. I wasn't at the last meeting when you discussed it. But I don't know, I just don't think that, I don't really feel that it's necessary because it doesn't really have any teeth in it. And it just is a, an avenue for continued or escalating confrontation and, you know, unpleasantness. That's my thought.
Seth, I actually agree with you. I think that it's not enforceable and if somebody's needs a, or if there's an issue, I think we'd have to trust the, whoever's president at that time to make a phone call or have a discussion with a councillor. But I, I don't think that it, by putting in the rules, it's going to be any more effective than picking up the phone. Especially given that Watertown never used their this provision.
Do we know how long, do we know how long Watertown has had this provision?
Allison, you're muted.
Yeah, sorry, I'm, I'm looking up just on my email quickly, the email from Mark Rich. Because he did respond. So he's, I think he said how long he has been there. Sorry, naturally, I'm unmuted and my dog's going to lose their mind. Let me try to find.
And to be fair, we only had those 13 that we were looking at, so it's very possible someone else does do this or has this language. But that seemed like a pretty good sampling.
Sorry, it was forwarded to me because we were. Mark is at KP Law and Kate, oh, there we go. In many years, acting as primary contact for the city. He, in parentheses, said, more than I care to admit at this point, I have never seen this rule implemented. So at least as long as he's been there. I don't know the exact amount of time.
But it sounds like a fair amount of time.
Yeah. Yeah, thanks.
Right, my, my only thought had been, and I think when we talked about it, is you know, that i- if there is a councillor that does not want to play by the rules, so to speak. You know, what power does anyone have over them? You know, if, if you know, I, I think we all try, try to strive for decorum in the meetings and, you know, keep the meetings moving along and I, I just thought to have something with teeth and I don't necessarily agree that, you know, perhaps lost a councillor chair or membership. Excuse me, committee chair or membership is the thing, but right now, there's no way to sanction someone, to give them say, hey, you know, knock it off or, you know.
Well, but when you say, you know, what power do we have to make someone do something? The reality is you don't because you're all elected officials. And so, you know, you don't report to each other, you know, that the president, the vice president have, have some authority, but it's really persuasive authority. And I do think that if the council adopts these rules, then you will have a body, you know, basically taking steps to affirmatively say, yes, these are the rules that we want to operate under. And then there's a certain understanding that everyone should act like an adult and follow the rules that they've just adopted. But I think, I think if you are including ways to sanction each other. I, I think, well, I, I, I guess to back up, I think that we've put in a lot of time and effort on revising and updating these rules. And I feel like there's a very, very good chance that the discussion will get derailed by this item. And all the work that we've all put in on this will be lost in terms of where the discussion goes. And I think I think that would be a shame because I think we've all put in a lot of time and effort on this and we've done a lot of good stuff. And I think the focus will be on the wrong things.
Valid point.
And there's always the opportunity to amend the rules at a later date. So it's not like if you don't do it now, you could never do it.
I think that councillor Burdick has brought up in the past that we, we have no authority over another councillor. There's no number of meetings that they have to even attend and that if somebody's not doing an acceptable job, they get voted out. That's a will of the people, of their precinct members or the constituents to to make that change, but we don't have the authority to minimize the effectiveness of any councillor duly elected. So I think you had a valid point.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Why, why don't, you know, I, I would make a motion if that's the proper thing to do to, to, to drop this then. That we leave it out.
Thank you. Is there a second on that?
Second.
I don't think we moved to have it ended.
Yeah. Yeah.
You need a roll, roll call vote because you're all remote.
Right, thank you. Cindy?
Counselors, Tamish.
Uh, yes.
Lutke.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Turkleson.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. So are there other issues to address on these draft uh, rules?
Well, the one thing that I think just came up recently and we say it early on in the rules about the president being the ceremonial leader. I don't know how we put something in there. We just had, you know, almost missed the, the christening of the boat and had some confusion there and, and some other things. Is there any kind of language we could put in there that would clue the staff to, you know, work through the president for the ceremonial roles? So we don't have, you know, willy nilly attendance by counselors at events. I mean, it does, it just says that. I just want, if there could be an extra sentence that would strengthen that so that it's clear.
I guess I'm not entirely sure what, what we're addressing. And which is the rule, Counselor Lutke?
It's, it's up in the beginning. Let me.
Under rule two, the president of Barnstable Town Council should be the official head of the town for all ceremonial purposes.
Okay.
Other counselors to serve in the ceremonial capacity.
Okay.
I think that, Betty, this particular one you're talking about, I think was more a transition thing than, than anything else. And as far as the, the christening of the motor vessel Barnstable today, both Vice President Clark and I were, were there and it, it went very well, as was Counselor Schnapp. So it, 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 it did work out. But, and I think Cindy is very good about letting us know about things coming up. And I think it's a coordination issue more than anything else.
Okay, that's, that's fair. I just wanted to make sure there couldn't be any stronger language we could put in there to make it clearer, but.
And keep in mind again that these are the rules for the council. These are your rules governing how you guys, you know, conduct your, your business.
Yeah, I, I would propose that Counselor Vice President Clark be the official speech giver for all occasion.
Okay, I, I've got four minutes till my next meeting. Sorry. Is, is there any other issue on these draft rules to address? I'll be happy to look at a clean copy and read it through.
So that's what I was going to suggest is maybe one more very quick meeting where we provide you with a clean copy, a redlined version showing the current rules, redlined against the clean copy. And then we can do one quick read through and any final edits, if that makes sense.
Sounds good.
Sounds good to me. The other thing for that meeting, and this is on me. I want to make sure I comb through any public comment and make sure that any suggestions that were made are addressed. So that we don't, didn't leave it hanging. I know some i- items, because they, because a public comment happens at the beginning of our meetings. So I just want to make sure that we've acknowledged that, any other outside input. So moving to I, agenda item D, approving the minutes that Cindy sent over to us. Did you have a chance to look at them? It's a lot of redlining and recognition of the work we've done here, the town attorneys, Nobur and Cogliano have done for us or with us. I'll take a motion to accept those minutes.
So move.
Second.
Thank you, Seth, for Counselor Burdick. All those in favor will need a roll call.
Yeah, it needs a roll call. Counselors, Tamish.
Yes.
Lutke.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Turkleson.
I'm staying.
Clark.
Yes.
It passes.
Thank you very much. Perhaps regarding our next meeting, do, can we ask Cindy to put a doodle out for some time in January? Please? Is that acceptable to everyone?
Sure.
And are all the public comments that were submitted in written form, are those somewhere?
They're always in the meeting minutes. They're always contained in each set of meeting minutes.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, I just wanted to make, make sure we circle back to that. Thank you. So given that we'll wait for date in the new year, I'll be happy to accept a.
Should I throw out a date just to see if it might work for, for you?
Go ahead.
Because I'm, I'm trying to work it around some other things. Would January sixth work?
Sure.
Yes, works for me.
Monday, January sixth? Sure.
We doing it online again, Karen?
It's up to Counselor Clark.
Yeah. Is that convenient for everyone?
Yes.
Okay, we'll make that last meeting and the same time, four o'clock. Is that acceptable?
Yes.
Okay, four o'clock. Thank you very much. Thanks for floating that for us, Karen, so it shows some momentum.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we need a ton of time between now and then.
Okay, thank you very much. Did we get a motion to adjourn? In the second?
Counselor Tamish.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Turkleson.
Yes.
Lutke.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
You are adjourned at five.
Thank you very much. Happy New Year.
Thank you all.